Welcome the audience to the January 17th, 2017 Parish Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. Would you all please stand while Coach Williams says the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, we come thanking thee for allowing us here another blessed day. We thank thee, Lord, that you have blessed us to do the year. You washed over us and you guided us. And we pray for this new year, Lord, that we face that you guide and lead us, that we might not depend upon our own understanding, but we depend upon you. We pray for this board, we pray for this staff. In prayer, ask for the blessing of thrones of those who have come tonight to seek our help, let the Holy Spirit guide and lead us, that we might do that which is pleasing in our sight, as we offer this day as our prayer.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the Father of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Ms. Christie, would you please call the roll?
Chair Jake Forche.
Here.
Vice Chair Art Little.
Here.
Mr. Randy Armitaur.
Here.
Ms. Betty Brown.
Here.
Ms. Latricia Kyle.
Here.
Ms. Julia Dickerson.
Here.
Ms. Sharon Felicia.
Here.
Mr. Kyle Lee. Mr. Art Little.
Here.
Mr. Gary Navarre.
Here.
Mr. Kirk Smith.
Here.
And Mr. LaSalle Williams.
You.
Thank you, Ms. Christie. This is an 11-member board. It will take a majority of those members present to grant or deny any requests heard tonight. The chair will refrain from voting unless that vote might affect the outcome. The meeting will be conducted with me reading the request from the agenda. The planning staff will give a presentation and report their recommendations. If the applicant would like to add to the staff's presentation, or if someone from the audience has comments, please come to the microphone and state your name, address, and the nature of your request. All persons wishing to speak other than the applicant need to fill out a blue Request to Appear form located in the back of this room. The form must be given to a staff member prior to the reading of that agenda item. As required by this board's bylaws, in all cases, the proponents will be limited to 10 minutes; opponents will be granted 10 minutes as well, with each speaker allowed no more than three minutes. I recommend that a spokesperson be selected if there is a large group wanting to speak on the same agenda item. If four or more Speaker Request forms are submitted, the time allotted or allowed for individual speakers will be limited based upon the number of forms submitted. The chair has the right to limit speakers who present redundant information or personal attacks. In unique situations, the chair may extend, or the board may vote to extend, the time allotted for speakers. After discussion, the board will vote on each request. I will announce the decision of the board after the vote. Preliminary subdivision approvals and the zoning exceptions and variances are final tonight. The study and rezoning cases will go before the police jury for final action on January 19th, 2017, in this room. This meeting is being taped by the Calhoun Parish Government Channel and can also be viewed on Wednesday and Thursday following the meeting. For additional run dates, please check the website at www.cppj.net, Channel 5 in Lake Charles, Salford, Moss Bluff, Westlake, Vinton, Dequincy, and Gillis; Channel 99 in Carless and Grand Lake. At this time, I would like everyone to please silence all of your electronic devices or any noise makers. Moving to Agenda Item Number Five, Take appropriate action to approve the minutes of the November 15th, 2016, and December 13th, 2016. Planning and zoning meetings, I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Cobb and a second by Ms. Brown. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item Six, Take appropriate action on a request by Daniel Miller for preliminary subdivision approval to allow single-family residential subdivision, seven lots, and country acre subdivision in the 300 block of Mark and Tell Road in Ward 6. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb, need a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Galicia. Ms. Wallace.
This property is located between Salford and Dequincy and encompasses just over nine acres of agricultural zone land. The petitioner is proposing a seven-lot subdivision with all lots being at least one acre in size. The subdivision meets the current standards for development. However, the Division of Engineering has expressed concerns over the number of driveways accessing Mark and Tell Road. Because the development meets the requirements for agricultural zoning, the staff recommends that the request be granted with the following stipulations: that the development is subject to an application for and/or compliance with an LPDES stormwater discharge permit, which may be required through the Department of Environmental Quality and the Calhoun Parish Division of Planning and Development; that a drainage impact analysis and a traffic impact analysis may be required in accordance with the parish codes; that the preliminary plat must be approved by the Division of Engineering prior to submission of engineering plans; and that prior to receiving preliminary plat approval from engineering, the subdivision must be redesigned with each lot having at least 230 feet of road frontage, or with shared access points on lot lines, and an increase in road frontage to 115 feet to provide for 230-foot distance between access points.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Are you the applicant?
No, sir. My name is Gary Johnson. I'm with Acuilon Surveying and Engineering. I'm the...
You're here representing the...
They are here, but I'm here representing them, yes.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record.
Gary Johnson with Acuilon Surveying, 235 Lewis Street, Salford, Louisiana.
Okay. Go ahead.
We're... The development across the road is at 100-foot road frontage without all of these stipulations. And as you heard, Mr. Jennifer, say, that this was designed within the minor sub-requirements. We understand what the parish is trying to do. We'd like to keep the 100-foot road frontage if possible, but we understand if we won't be able to. Other than that, any questions from you all?
All right. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir. You may be seated.
Question for the staff. The shared driveways would be... We're proposing a stipulation for those to be on the lot line, so that would reduce, basically, the driveways by half of the seven.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments by the board? All right? Yes, sir?
If possible, would it be... Would it be possible to do these shared driveways at 100-foot interval, or the 200-foot frontage, instead of the 115 or 230 that's being requested?
That's something that the board could discuss and consider.
Thank you. That's all I would ask. Thank you.
May I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
In Engineering's memo to us on this matter, they specifically requested the 230 feet of distance between the access points, based upon the Federal Highway Administration's Access Management for Street and Highways Manual. I'm not sure how hard and fast they would hold to the 230. That would probably be their call. Maybe the stipulation could be revised to state something to the effect of Engineering's per Engineering's recommendation?
Could just... Could we just add a stipulation that pending Engineering approval?
Or maybe cleaner, I don't know what the developer's timeline is, to defer this matter and get Engineering to comment on that?
Sure.
Either way, I don't know.
Sir, would you come back up? Would you guys be open to defer? Would a 30-day deferral be adequate staff for us to get something from Engineering? The question's for the staff. Would that be an adequate time period for 30 days to get Engineering to comment?
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Would you be open for a 30-day...
We are. We would be open for it, but if... I could speak with Engineering next week, and if they won't approve that, I mean, we'll just go with what's actually there, if we can do an approval pending Engineering.
Well, once we would approve this tonight, we would have to come... You would have to come back. Engineering couldn't over... If I'm understanding correctly, unless we amend this to just state pending Engineering approval?
Well, Engineering has made this recommendation.
Sure.
That's why we're presenting it to you.
Right.
So I'm not sure... We're not sure if you don't, you know, attach the stipulation to that, whether Engineering is going to approve.
Sure. Right.
So I would think that probably either as a deferral for us to meet with Engineering to work this out would be probably the best.
I would agree with that. Advocate, do you... If you're wanting to discuss and work this out with Engineering, it's best for us to defer and not act on this because...
I'm just asking if they want to do the deferral or not.
Sure. Okay.
This was also going to be the next agenda item as well.
Okay.
They just want to go ahead and go with what the Engineering Department's requesting.
Okay.
It's no problem.
All right. Thank you. You may be seated. Any questions or comments by the board? All right. Seeing no opposition, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item Six passes with stipulations. Item Seven, Take appropriate action on a request by Dennis Landry for preliminary subdivision approval to allow single-family residential subdivision, seven lots, in D. Landry Estates in the 200 block of Mark and Tell Road in Ward 6. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Brown and a second by Ms. Cobb. Ms. Wallace.
This property is just east of the subdivision in the previous item and also encompasses just over nine acres of agricultural zone land. The petitioner, again here, is proposing a seven-lot subdivision with all lots being at least one acre in size. Again, the subdivision meets all the current standards, but Division of Engineering has expressed the same concerns about the driveways. So because the development meets the requirements for agricultural zoning, the staff does recommend that this request be granted with the same three stipulations, but in this case, the fourth is that prior to receiving preliminary plat approval from Engineering, the subdivision must be redesigned with each lot having at least 230 feet of road frontage, or with shared access points on lot lines, and an increase in road frontage to 115 feet to provide for 230-foot distance between access points.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Do you have anything to add? It's pretty much... Okay. Any questions or comments by the board? Seeing no opposition, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item Seven passes. Item Eight, Take appropriate action on a request by Donna Riggs Stutes for preliminary subdivision approval to allow single-family residential subdivision, 15 lots, in Camelia Court, at 838 Podraski Road in Ward 1. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations. Motion by Ms. Cobb. Second by Coach Williams. Ms. Wallace.
This property is located in the Moss Bluff area and encompasses nearly seven acres of single-family residential property. The developer proposes dividing the land into 15 lots of varying sizes, with the smallest being just over 11,000 square feet, and the largest being nearly 38,000 square feet. This subdivision came before you for preliminary approval in November and was denied with a vote of two to six. At that time, the subdivision did not meet the minimum requirements of agricultural zoning. Since then, the land has been rezoned, and the proposal is now being reintroduced. Because the development meets the requirements for residential zoning, the staff recommends that the request be granted with the following stipulations: that the development is subject to an application for and/or compliance with an LPDES stormwater discharge permit; that a drainage impact analysis and a traffic impact analysis may be required in accordance with the parish codes.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Mr. Gab, we do have one blue card in opposition.
And I apologize, Mr. Chair. I did neglect to state that the gentleman that is speaking did forward us his opposition document ahead of time, and it is on your tablets.
Okay. Thank you. The applicant would like to add to the staff's presentation?
Mr. Chairman, my name is David Minton. Address is 4310 Ryan Street. I'm with the Cypress Group, representing Ms. Stutes on this parcel. As Ms. Wallace indicated, the property... This project was brought to y'all back in November. It was turned down at the time. There was some concern, I believe, and I guess a lack of knowledge at the time, about the road leading up to it. Since then, we've done investigation, our firm, as well as the Calhoun Parish Engineering Office. Matter of fact, we spoke with Mr. Connor this morning about it, and it does not appear to be any concerns with the quality of the road with regards to meeting... I mean, it's currently an active parish road.
Sure.
That said, as Ms. Wallace indicated, the average lot in here is going to be just under half an acre. A large slot's going to be just over three-quarters of an acre. Four of those lots will be waterfront. The owner is Ms. Stutes. Her son is a landscape architect, actually putting the project together, and will be bringing in landscape features to the property. As you... Jennifer, if you could back up to the picture with the sign on the front, or if that's possible, please. If you look at the property, there's a big sign up front, and that's actually he developed that himself, showing kind of the concept of the project. I know we don't have a better picture of it here, but they're proposing a walkway along the waterfront as a possibility within the development, you know, community space for the property. There's also, if... On the northwest corner of the parcel, as you come into the property, will be a lot dedicated just specifically for boat storage and also the sewage plant that'll be required in the community. So, you know, they're looking to do a high-end, you know, higher-end, higher-quality development, waterfront development. We've been working with the real estate agent that has the property listed for about six months on the parcel, and as I understand it, you know, they have three of the waterfront lots already spoken for if this is approved. So it's not that it's truly speculative. It is... It's a viable... Very viable project. So any other questions from the board about...
Any questions from the board for the applicant represented? Thank you, sir. You may be seated.
This time, I will call David Park.
Please state your address. Name and address for the record, sir.
Yeah, David Park, 704 Podraski Road. I'm a 20-year resident, retired engineer, representing all the residents of Podraski, Natchez, Musser, and Rouge Jolino. I have began a petition from all those residents. There's about 35 signatures, all against the proposed development. It was turned down initially, as previously mentioned. It's still about Podraski Road and the impact on current residents and the character of the neighborhood. It is an active road. Unfortunately, it's very scenic tree line, a lot of windy curves, numerous blind spots. It was originally a gravel road. We had five residents down there. Numbers doubled recently, but still the original five people. There's no attempts to upgrade the road when it was overlaid a couple of years ago. Drainage is a problem. It continuously drains into the road. I'll show you some pictures here shortly. Again, it was never designed for the level of traffic increase that's going to occur both during the construction phase and during the development of all these different houses. For the current residents, there's four retirees living down here at the end of the street. We lived there for 20 years. There's no problem with that road with the amount of traffic that's going up and down that road. Again, not one person in favor of this development. It's used daily by the residents, walking, jogging, cycling, and the increased construction activity is going to completely change the character of this neighborhood. A lot of the neighbors weren't even aware of the development, and we're looking at 15 homes, waterfront property. You're going to bring in all kinds of boat traffic. You're going to bring in people, guests from out of town, and all the family and everything. There's going to be 50 to 100 cars coming down that road once this thing is developed, let alone during the construction phase. You've got cement trucks, dump trucks, cement pumpers, material delivery, all kinds of heavy equipment trailers. That road is not designed for that kind of activity. The entrance at Podraski at Musser is totally substandard, 90-degree curve, 10-mile-an-hour curve, is 17 feet wide. It's partially obstructed by trees and tree limbs. You've got partial lane there all the time. There's three driveways from the residents that come into that intersection. Again, I'll show you the pictures. A lot of the sections of Podraski have no drainage. Again, it drains into the road, so you end up with debris almost all the time, single lane. There's a section of road that floods, I mentioned previously. We end up taking a boat to get people out of there when it floods, the low section. You're going to have to address that by a bridge or elevate the road. And again, we're looking at more parties, more drinking, more loud music, live music, sometimes good music. I've heard it from people as far away as Natchez and Musser when I was getting the surveys. Go ahead and pass it out.
Sir, if you could... You could... Your time's up. If you have one more comment, you know, just to wrap it up.
Well, I'll have... I'll hand these pictures out. I think that one picture right there on top, I have no idea what that intersection's all about. That happened today. I couldn't get through the intersection with another vehicle.
Any questions for Mr. Park of the board? Thank you, sir. You may be seated. This time, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll call the applicant back up to address the concerns brought forth by the opposition while we review this material.
So just, it seems like the major concern is the traffic. If memory serves me, John, correct me, we counted 11 driveways on this road. It is a rural road. The additional lots, from a traffic standpoint, are minimal at best. The time that we were doing our road survey, we passed one vehicle. Yes, it's a rural setting. We're not proposing to put a 200-acre or 200-lot subdivision.
Sure.
It's family property that's been in the family forever. Son and the mother are working together. Like I said, he's a landscape architect. This is their vision for the property. It's properly zoned. Again, road... The parish road meets all standards. Drainage within the parcel, drainage was brought up. All drainage will be retained within the parcel or discharged from the parcel into the river. We've done some preliminary work, but also, I believe, one of the stipulations is that a drainage impact analysis is required. That'll be addressed and submitted accordingly. If a traffic impact analysis, it would be required, we would do the same. But again, from the minimal amount of traffic, the FHWA manual doesn't even start until you have 400 vehicles a day on a road. This road doesn't even reach 10% of that a day at this time. Any other questions or comments from a technical standpoint? I've focused mainly on drainage and sewer. John's been with our firm. Mr. Lowery has been looking at traffic and access and things of that nature. If y'all have any specific questions.
Any concerns or questions regarding traffic? Mr. Armitaur.
Well, reading this, you know, and it stated that upon approval, it will be subject to a traffic impact analysis, and I think that pretty much answers the question for me.
But Jennifer, would this trigger a traffic impact analysis?
No.
No. It's so minimal that a trigger is 1,000.
Yeah. That's what I'm thinking.
Generally, a traffic study is required at about 100 lots, as well as those are triggered.
Question for the staff. We did review this to grant it. Could y'all address any... Anything that may have come up in your review that said, you know, hey, this road is parish standards, and we approve this project?
Well, we did look into it, and, you know, it has been parish for some time, and unfortunately, when it was accepted as a parish road, those staff members aren't really there to say, you know, what the standard was when it was accepted. But it is sufficient for use. The traffic impact analysis would not be required. The road was overlaid in 2011. It's due for another overlay in 2025. They tell me that the surface is what they consider to be excellent. And we do have on file, and I wanted to point this out, these folks have already received their approval from Engineering. If you notice, on the two previous requests, we asked that you stipulate that they received preliminary approval from Division of Engineering, and Engineering has already given the approval for this.
Okay.
So there are no other issues.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments by the board? Ms. Christie, if we could do a roll call vote?
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Navarre?
Yes.
Ms. Felicia?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Ms. Dickerson?
Yes.
Mr. Armitaur?
Yes.
Ms. Cobb?
Yes.
8411.
Item Eight passes with stipulations. Item Nine, Take appropriate action on case EX03-035-16. A request by KA350 LLC for an exception to allow a borrow pit, 85 acres, in the 7,000 block of Corbina Road in Ward 3. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Navarre. Second by Ms. Cobb. Ms. Wallace.
This property is located in southeast Lake Charles and encompasses 95 acres of agricultural zone land. Should the request be approved, the petitioners will excavate an 85-acre borrow pit with 90% of the material being hauled off-site. Since the staff recommendation was published, we have received notice from the Division of Engineering on their recommendations, and they would like to include a road bond, but we would like to keep the stipulations the same as they are published. Because minimal impacts are to be expected, the staff recommends that the request be granted with the following stipulations: that the development must be in accordance with Section 26-1221F4 of the Parish Code of Ordinances; that permitting is subject to Division of Engineering approval; and that the hauler must provide a current occupational license prior to permitting.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Does the applicant have anything to add? Sir, Mr. Gab?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Tom Gale. Address is 713 Kirby Street, Lake Charles. Couple things very briefly. Number one, there's a typo on your agenda. The property's not located on Corbina Road. It actually faces Tom Abear Road.
Okay.
And so I don't want to mislead anybody on that. The application is correct. What you're seeing on the site plan is correct. It's actually one mile west of Corbina Road. Number two, the road bond, this is simply a zoning application request or an exception, so it's not a permitting request. There's no permitted operator. There's no immediate site plan for it, hauling, and so road bond is perfectly appropriate. And we don't know what route we're going to take, but certainly agree to the stipulation. There's no problem with that. Glad to require whatever technical... Or, excuse me, accept whatever technical requirements Engineering may have.
Sure. Any questions for Mr. Gab? Thank you. Any questions or comments by the board? Seeing no opposition, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item Nine passes. Item Ten, Take appropriate action on case RZ07-001-17. A request by Talisha Bertrand to rezone from agricultural to general commercial to allow general commercial development, auto truck sales at 2118 Highway 109 South in Ward 7. I will entertain a motion for the... With the stipulations?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb. Need a second? Ms. Galicia? Ms. Wallace?
This property is located in the Vinton area and encompasses 1.3 acres of agricultural zone land. If approved, the petitioner plans to convert a portion of the existing home into an office for a used car lot. She plans to have two to five cars at this location at any given time. Because the proposed use is not consistent with the character of the area, the staff recommends that the request be denied. Should the board grant the request, the staff recommends the following stipulations: that the development adheres to the site plan on file, provided that the director may authorize adjustments to site plans in light of technical or engineering considerations; that a drainage impact analysis and a traffic impact analysis will be required unless appropriate waivers are granted by the Division of Engineering; that all exterior lighting must be oriented inward toward the development to minimize intrusion onto surrounding properties; and that permitting and occupational licensing are subject to approvals from both the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development and the State Fire Marshal.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Are you the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
My name is Talisha Bertrand. I live at 2118 Highway 109 South, Vinton, Louisiana. I'm just trying to get an office opened up so that I can acquire a used motor vehicle I'm just trying to get an office opened up so that I can acquire a used motor vehicle dealer license. I wholesale vehicles to dealers. The inventory would not actually be on location. They would go straight from auction to another dealer. So if, anytime I would have a vehicle there, it might be one or two. That's what I'm trying to do.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
So you're not selling them on-site?
No, ma'am.
You couldn't just open an office somewhere in a business district, which is with an address, and do it the same?
You could, but I just need an office. And there's not even going to be anything there. It's just a computer and a phone and a fax machine.
Don't they require a sign?
They would require a sign.
Okay, yeah. So you'd have a sign, which, and a lot of times, it's hard for us to, you know, again, we set precedents here by making a decision. But once you put a sign out, it's even hard for you to tell what sort of traffic that's going to draw, what that's going to do to your business. You may, or you know it, you may have 10 cars out on consignment, you know, with people just driving by and seeing. So we have to almost anticipate
Sure.
a worst-case scenario when we make these decisions. And so I think that's all something to consider, that even though that's your intentions. And for us to even create an amendment or a stipulation to say, you know, only two or three cars can be allowed on the property at one time, there's no way really for us to police that. So it's, that's the challenges that we face. And then the precedence that's set is we now allow car dealerships on this road, you know?
Well, there's so much on that road. There's gas stations, and there was a waffle shop. Now there's a strip club, and
Sure.
I don't think anybody would be offended by a car dealership.
Sure, okay. Mr. West?
I just want to interject something. Typically, you know, we do have a provision in the ordinance that allows for home occupations, where someone could, you know, have a small office out of their home that's dedicated for business, people, accountants, you know, people that do most of the paperwork. Problem with this is when, is the inventory.
Right.
Not allowed to have inventory as part of the home occupation. That's what's kicking it into this, y'all are having the issue, is really the inventory
Right.
that she may have.
Right. And that's where, you know, in our discussion, it's hard to predict what your inventory may be. If your business grows, you know, you're saying two to three cars, but, you know, it's going to be hard to stop growth, you know? So it could turn into much more. I think that's the concern of the staff. Am I correct?
Yes. And just to remind you, I know not everyone was on the board at the time, but just a few years ago, you all did turn down a request that was very similar in the Le Blues Settlement Clow area, where a gentleman wanted a license so he could do some personal car buying at auctions. And he had to rezone to get the state license, and y'all turned down that request. Because again, you know, we hear, oh, I just need the office, or I just need the license, and then next thing you know, and it's nothing personal. It would be a great thing for her to get this business up and it to expand. But when you're surrounded by agricultural zoning, it's just hard to justify.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, ma'am. You may be seated. Any questions or comments by the board? Ms. Christie, let's do a roll call vote on this one.
Mr. Little?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Ms. Dickerson?
No.
Mr. Williams?
No.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Galicia?
No.
Ms. Cobb?
No.
Mr. Navarre?
No.
Mr. Armitaur?
No.
Nine against.
Item 10 fails. Item 11, take appropriate action on case RZ-04-002-17. A request by RD Leasing LLC to rezone from agricultural to general commercial to allow general commercial development, a restaurant, and retail uses at 48695 Highway 27 South in Ward Four. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Navarre.
Second.
Second by Ms. Cobb. Ms. Wallace?
This property is located in Carless and encompasses just over two acres of agricultural zone land. If the rezoning is approved, the petitioners plan to construct a restaurant and a strip mall with leased space. Because minimal impacts are to be expected, the staff recommends that the request be granted with the following stipulations: that the development adhered to the site plan on file, provided that the director may authorize adjustments to site plans in light of technical or engineering considerations; that a drainage impact analysis will be required unless appropriate waivers are granted by the Division of Engineering; that all exterior lighting must be oriented inward toward the development to minimize intrusion onto surrounding properties; that a landscape plan must be submitted; that the approved screening and landscaping must be installed prior to issuance of an occupational license; and that permitting is subject to approval from the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Does the applicant have anything to add to the staff's presentation? If so, you may come to the podium at the time. Okay. Any questions or comments by the board? Seeing no opposition, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item 11 passes. Item 12, take appropriate action on case RZ-04-003-17. A request by Richard Dowden to rezone from agricultural to recreational vehicle park to allow recreational vehicle park two spaces at 584 Burton Shipyard Road in Ward Four. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Cobb, and a second by Coach Williams. Ms. Wallace?
This property is located in Carless and encompasses one acre. This request came to us following a violation notification. Currently on the property are two recreational vehicles. One was permitted in 2014 for camping purposes. That permit stated that the unit had to be road-ready at all times and could not be connected to water or sewer. The other has not been permitted. And this is the case, this one and the next, the variance request, that we do not have attachments for on your tablets, but we did give you hard copies.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Are you the applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Janet Dowden. I live at 7391 Olson Road, which is right across the street from the property that is highlighted.
Okay.
On that, that big house on the corner of Olson and Burton Shipyard Road.
Okay.
And we also own this property of, right there next to where the new Driftwood LNG purchased.
Okay.
And we have all the property behind it leased. Now, we have a, they have a variance to only one acre. I mean, where y'all want two acres for two RVs, but all this property we've had leased for approximately 20 years. And we live right across the street. The Valets live there, the Hermans live there, and all this is purchased by Driftwood LNG. And approximately two weeks ago, we signed a lease-to-purchase agreement for all three properties. That's probably going to, if they get all their permits, it'll commence in two years. So we're not going to even own them in two years. But this is basically for personal use. We have family that comes in from Texas, and we have a lot of family reunions. We have a big place, and we got it for personal use. We have friends that are stayed in the park, in the spots right now, and we don't charge rent. And I pay, I have the bill. I pay for a security light that shines on both campers. And they pay the electric bill, and that's it. I have, I have their phone numbers if you want to verify any information. I've nothing, I mean, it's just two campers. And it's our, an acre of land, which actually exceeds more than an acre because it goes all the way to the water, which is part of the land that we have leased.
Right. I appreciate all the information, as I'm sure the rest of the board. But, you know, we have to look at this particular lot that's before us, you know, and
I understand.
everything else. We appreciate the information. And I think that's
If the two are not allowed, would one be allowed on a whole acre of land?
Ms. Wallace?
It was, wasn't it?
I mean, we have a
Or if it's A1, there's
I mean, what are we allowed on our land?
Can I take this back a couple steps?
Hold on one second, ma'am.
I mean
Ms. Wallace, yes, take us back.
I didn't finish the recommendation.
Oh, you didn't?
I'm, I'm
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Apparently, we were excited and ready to move on. So if I could, just real quick, recreational vehicles are not constructed for permanent use. And because the proposed park doesn't meet the minimum standards of two acres, which we would cover in the next request, the staff recommends that the request be denied. Should the board grant the request, the staff recommends that the development adhere to the site plan on file, that a drainage impact analysis would be required unless the waiver is granted by engineering; that the exterior lighting must be oriented inward; and that RV park model types are prohibited. Now, to go back to your question, the ordinance does allow RVs on personal property for camping-type purposes and things like that, but it cannot be connected to water and sewer, which I believe in this case, it is.
Yeah, we
Connect to water and sewer.
Ma'am, please do not comment.
They have to be road-ready, and FEMA requires that RVs can only be on property for 180 days.
Right.
So the fact that a permit was granted in 2014 doesn't mean that a unit should be there today because of the 180-day clause. And I didn't find where any permit had been renewed or anything like that.
Sure.
So
And it's 180 days without permanent connections, water and sewer.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So they have to use the holding tank.
And I'm sorry for cutting you off. I thought you were done.
That's all right. I know. We're moving on.
Yep. Any questions or comments by the board for the applicant? Thank you, ma'am. You may be seated. Any questions or comments by the board? I think, you know, we referenced it earlier, the precedence that we set here. I tend to agree with the staff's recommendation here. It's two, and correct, they're basically doing this in violation currently, right?
Correct. And it's actually my understanding that one of the units was moved off after they received the letter. And then since they received the letter and filed the application, they moved another unit on.
Okay.
And we were told that one of the units was for a pregnant niece, and I believe the applicant just said that it was for friends. So I'm really unsure.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Armitaur?
Okay. This, there's no way stop them from, if they have a family reunion, and a couple people come over with their campers and sleep for the weekend and go about their merry way back home, right? I mean, that happens. You said it can't be connected. People come in. I mean, that's what she was stating. That's what they use the property for, because they have the abilities for the weekend to have their families in. I mean, I see
To be legal, they would have to get a permit for an RV to be connected to power only for up to six months.
No, I mean, she was saying they come in for the family reunion, and they go back their merry way, you know?
To be legal?
Oh, okay.
They would have to get
And I believe that
I'm just curious, because you see that happen all the time. It's over the weekend.
Ma'am, I did not call you back up. Please, please be seated. Thank you.
You know, you see that happen a lot, you know, and it's, I don't, that people come in and they stay in their campers. I mean, I pulled up in people's yard and stayed with them.
Yeah. I think, I think the, this has been an ongoing thing, correct?
And it's also not
Right.
in her yard. It's in a separate piece of property. And we did receive a complaint that drove us out there to investigate. So it's not like, you know, Joni has a baby and mom comes to stay with her
Right.
for a week. It's not like that.
Oh, the applicant? Did you, is she still here? I'll allow you to comment. Go ahead.
Well, I was, I was just going to point out that we do have family that comes, that lives in Texas. My father-in-law, mother-in-law, sister-in-law, a few family. And they've come and stayed at our, across the street for a month. Because they live in Texas, they come in for crab, and they're retired. You know, I mean, we don't, we've never set a deadline on when they could, how long they could come and visit it. So, I mean, it's, periodically, there's nobody there. Sometimes there's nobody there.
Okay. Thank you. You may be seated. Mr. Crane?
I was just going to say, and I think Jennifer sort of touched on this a little bit, but I think the difference is, it's really, it's the attachment, you know, to the utilities. And, and, yeah, there are properties out there where people may pull up an RV, or they have these bus-type, you know, RVs.
Sure.
And, and they may stay a couple of days or so. And we may not have knowledge of that. But I think in this case, it's the attachment of the utilities is the issue.
Without a permanent residence on the
Right, right. And that's where, that's where we've had to go out. And we have cited folks for hooking up to utilities and all that permits and things. Those are really for the RV parks. If you want an RV park, then that's when you design it to hook up to the proper utilities
Right.
and have that. So I just, I just
I think another point, if we are lax on this and continually allow this sort of thing to go on, you know, you'll be driving down any parish road and looking at RVs on your left and right. You know, I mean, due to the economic boom, I mean, people, that's what people are looking for, to live here, to work as, 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 as less costly as possible.
And I can tell you, you know, after the hurricanes, you know, there was an emergency period of time where we were allowing
Sure.
people to live in RVs.
Sure.
Hooking up to utilities.
Right.
And I can tell you today, we're still finding where the emergency period ended, and those were supposed to be removed.
They're still there.
They're still there. And we're having to cite people for that.
Right.
It just, and so that, I think that's, you know, there's some confusion there, too.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Little?
Basically, if this application is denied, there is, she still has legal opportunities to put an RV there if she goes through the proper steps with permitting, blah, blah, blah. If she does that, she can bring an RV in and get her permits and do this in and out. I mean, she can use her property.
Wait for that. You mean, like she could get a, go in to be, to get a, an RV park?
That's what she's applying for.
No, no. Just to bring someone in to stay for the weekend or something.
That's where the
Could she do that if this, if this is
If you could get a permit for one unit to be on the property temporarily.
For 180 days.
Six months.
For 180, right.
For a camp-type purpose.
There's a different, there's a different channel for that, then. Okay. This isn't the right forum.
It'd be a hassle.
Right. Agreed. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Christie, let's do a roll call vote.
Ms. Cobb?
No.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Mr. Little?
No.
Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. Navarre?
Yes.
Ms. Dickerson?
No.
Ms. Galicia?
Yes.
Mr. Armitaur?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Seven against and two for.
Item 12 fails. Item 13, take appropriate action on case VA-04-002-17. A request by Richard Dowden for a variance to decrease the minimum lot size requires two acres, requesting one acre at 584 Burton Shipyard Road in Ward Four. I will entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Cobb, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Galicia. Ms. Wallace?
Again, this is the same property that was considered in the previous agenda item. In this area, an RV park is required to be two acres, but the petitioner only has one acre, so the variance is necessary. And because recreational vehicles are not constructed for permanent use, the staff recommends that the request be denied.
Okay. Does the applicant have anything to add to the staff's presentation? Okay. Question for the staff. This, is this an effort in futility, since we've, we'll act on it. I'm just, for general information, I mean, we've denied
Well, since, since this board is not the final say on zoning.
Okay.
Please do review that.
We'll have to do both.
Yes.
Yeah, I had every intention of acting. I was just curious. It seems futile, but. Okay. Any questions or comments by the board? Ms. Christie, a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Dickerson?
No.
Mr. Little?
No.
Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Ms. Cobb?
No.
Mr. Navarre?
Yes.
Mr. Armitaur?
No.
Ms. Galicia?
Yes.
Seven against and two for.
Item 13 fails. Item 14, take appropriate action on case RZ-03-004-17. A request by Red Roz Enterprises to rezone from single-family residential to mixed residential to allow mixed residential development, two duplexes in the 900 block of Tallow Road in Ward Three. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations. Motion by Coach Williams, and a second by Ms. Dickerson. Ms. Wallace?
This property is located south of Lake Charles and encompasses just less than a half an acre. The petitioner owns two lots and would like to construct a duplex on each lot. Because the proposed use is consistent with the character of the area, the staff recommends that the request be granted with the following stipulations: that the development adhered to the site plan on file, provided that the director may authorize adjustments to site plans; that the development adhered to stormwater best management practices; that a drainage impact analysis will be required unless appropriate waiver is granted by the Division of Engineering; and that all exterior lighting must be oriented inward toward the development to minimize intrusion onto toward the development to minimize intrusion onto surrounding properties.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Does the applicant have anything to add to the staff's presentation? If so, you may come to the podium at this time. Any questions or comments by the board? Seeing no opposition, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item 14 passes. Item 15. Take appropriate action on case RZ-06-005-17. A request by Travis Farley to rezone from agricultural to recreational vehicle park to allow a recreational vehicle park, eighty-two spaces, at 509 Royer Loop in Ward 6. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations. Motion by Ms. Cobb, second by Mr. Smith. Ms. Wallace?
This property is located between Sulfur and Dequincy and encompasses 9.3 acres. Should the rezoning be approved, the petitioner will sell the, the property to a developer who will construct the park. The park will include a check-in facility with washrooms, green space with picnic tables and barbecue pits, and a stock pond. Because the proposed use is not consistent with the character of the area, the staff recommends that the request be denied. Should the board grant the request, the staff recommends the following stipulations: that the development adhered to the site plan on file, provided that the director may authorize adjustments; that all exterior lighting must be oriented inward; that RV park model types are prohibited; that screening must be provided in accordance with Section 26-50 of the Parish Code of Ordinances; that a drainage impact analysis will be required unless appropriate waiver is granted by engineering; and that permitting is subject to approval of the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development and Gravity Drainage District Number 6 of Wards 5 and 6.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Does the applicant?
Yes, sir. Yes, my name is Gary Johnson with Acculon Surveying and Engineering, 235 Lewis Street, Sulfur, Louisiana. I'm here representing the developer, as well as Mr. Farley, which are both present at this time, if y'all do have any direct questions for them. The intent of this is to bring a recreational park and a family-oriented RV park to the area. We're, we're not trying to over, overpopulate or over-design this park just for RVs. We've got an oversized detention pond we're planning on putting in here and stocking it, as well as dog-walking parks, and trying to draw, once this big boom is over, and still have people want to come to our area and have a nice place to, to come and visit. The nearest park that I can think of within the vicinity is Holbrook Park, which is about six, eight miles up the road. So this, this area right here, I believe, would do well with a small, it's just a small 10-acre park versus what everybody has of these bad thoughts of these 80-acre developments for man camps. We're not trying to go that route. We, we're not over-designing this park. We're only doing 82 spaces on a 10-acre, a 10-acre development, and there's room for tons more, but we, we didn't want to go that route. We wanted to make this a family-oriented park and resort-type area.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Mr. Gab, we do have four cards in opposition. At this time, I'm gonna call Mr. Farley, 'cause he also filled out a card, and he's a proponent. Also the owner.
Mr. Chairman, four in opposition.
My name's Travis Farley. I live at 3700 Markentale Settlement Road, Benton, Louisiana, 70668. And I am the owner of the property at this moment, and I am wanting to sell it. I just felt like that this was a good thing. It was, it's not a man camp. In fact, I have, I've been opposed to man camps before in the area and stuff. I don't believe in that. This is a recreation thing for families, and for families to be able to come and have a good time in, for a little while. And another thing I wanted to bring out, is the young lady that is gonna be purchasing the property, is gonna be living on the property also. She's gonna have residence there. It's not gonna be some big corporation trying to bring in a bunch of traitors and stuff.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Farley? Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Now, these are the four in opposition, Mr. Gab, so I'd like to call Mr. Keith Salter.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I'll, if board allows each speaker two and a half minutes.
Yes, that'd be fair.
Keith Salter, 403 Royer Loop, Sulfur, Louisiana, 70663.
Yes, sir.
My main concern is safety. I saw in the film right there, you saw five crosses right there at the corner of the property on 27, and that was my wife's brothers, only two kids, their mama, stepbrother, and stepdad got killed by a Bobtail Freightliner running the stop sign on High Hope Road crossing toward Royer Loop. But just, I like Dale Farley. He's a friend of mine. He's a good Sunday school teacher. I like to see him sell a property, but I don't see, for 10 acres, and you got 82 campers there, that's gonna be 82 vehicles trying to get on the road. And if you're, the property is, I don't know how much road front is on Royer Loop. I asked him, he said they're gonna be departing on Royer Loop to turn, to go on Highway 27. Well, if you're number one to get on Highway 27, it takes you five or 10 minutes to just get across on High Hope Road. And if you can visualize people coming westbound on High Hope Road, it's gonna either cross to Royer Loop or turn south. It's impossible, because they made a turn lane going north off of 27 on High Hope Road. You cannot even see the traffic until you pull out on the road to get on it. People will pass going toward Dequincy. If a car's turning left on Royer Loop, they'll pass in the turning lane, and then somebody coming out of High Hope Road gonna get clobbered. It's, it's a very dangerous intersection, and, and I believe they'll agree with it. Now, if you can four-lane the road, I tried to get a traffic light, the State Department, to put a traffic light there, and, or at least rumble strips. They wouldn't even do that. And they put the markers down, too high-density traffic to, for having a traffic light there is what, what my, what I was given. There's four, four reasons. I gave you two of them. One, crossing from, toward the west or turning left, that's a danger. I live on Royer Loop. My business is down High Hope Road, and if somebody is sitting at the stop sign on High Hope Road, and you're waiting for the traffic, you take off, they'll turn in front of you, 'cause they got there first. They act like it's a four-way stop sign instead of, it's, it's just a very dangerous situation.
Sir, your two and a half minutes are up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Jonathan Arino at 487 Royer Loop, Sulfur, Louisiana, 70663. I live at, my property don't join right up to the proposed RV park, but I've been with, trying to deal with Ward 7 Drainage Board and the Parish of Cauquay. I've talked to the administrator, well, not the administrator, the head of Public Works, trying to get some help with some drainage where I live. What's happened is, there was a natural drainage through there, and the property owner just west of me locked up the drainage, and that was done back when my dad owned it, probably 35 years ago, and it's just creating a marsh. And I've tried to get them to open that, and then I talked to Dale, and he said they're gonna put some more stuff there. And I can't imagine what we're gonna do if we do have any extra water there on our land. My pond, if you can, you can look at the aerial photos, and it's grown significantly. So I guess it's just gonna keep on doing it until we can get some relief some kind of way. So that's the reason I wouldn't want to see it there.
You're concerned about the drainage impacts?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Arino. Your name and address, please, sir.
My name's Larry Owens. I live at 146 High Hope Road. I've been out there about eight years. My biggest concern is traffic. If you ever travel up 27 this day and time, it is getting dangerous. People are doing some crazy things. You see wrecks constantly. So this is a very dangerous intersection. You're asking potential 82 more vehicles coming out. There are times in the morning, I take a left off High Hope, headed south. I work in town in the middle of Sulfur. And there's times I wait five minutes because of all the traffic coming down from Dequincy. So now you're gonna have people across the street. I'm far development in this parish. I love that we've got infrastructure coming in, but we've gotta do it in smart areas. And I just don't think that corner is, is, you know, adding the potential of that much traffic coming out, you know? We can't handle it. We need help on the north end of 27. So I'd love for this to go somewhere, but just not there.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Mr. Jones, or Ms. Jones?
Hi, I'm Sean Jones. I live at 503 Royer Loop. My property does back up to the proposed RV park, and I love Mr. Dale. He's a good friend of my parents. I absolutely would love to see him sell his land, 'cause I understand why. But, one, the traffic is a major concern, and they've mentioned it enough, but I just want to say for you that don't live out there, we already have two officers every day directing traffic at Houston River Road, which is a couple of miles before that. It can take you 30 minutes to get from when you turn off onto 27, just to make it to Royer Loop with the traffic that we have now. Also, we've been at our property for 14 years. I can't tell you how many times we've had to go down to the corner because of accidents and people upside down in the culverts in the middle of the night. The five people that died there, it's, it's, we're lucky it's not more. My family lives on the other side, which is High Hope Road. Royer Loop and High Hope are actually the same road, just split by 27, and they're right. I teach in Lake Charles. I drive to Lake Charles every day, and we are the first home on Royer Loop, and it can take me 10 minutes to get out on Highway 27. We also are the one that butts up to the property. We flood every time it rains. Every time. My yard is underwater. I wish I would've taken, brought some pictures to show you, but I can't imagine, you know, 82 more. And they did mention Holbrook Park, and that's great. It's about seven, eight miles away, and it stays empty. No one goes to it. I'm, I'm telling you, I wish they did. It's a beautiful park. It really is. But it's, it stays maybe two or three campers there, 'cause we bring our kids there to ride bikes, and, and the people there are wonderful. But there's no one there. I just don't see how we would have, I don't see how this would make any use. But 82 lots means 82 vehicles, 82 people, all still trying to come out in my back door. And like I said, I love Mr. Farley, but we all live on about one acre out there. We moved out there so that we could have this space, and you're talking about 82 people in 10 acres. It just doesn't make sense.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments by the board?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir. Mr. Navarre?
I've camped at Holbrook Park many times on the weekends. You cannot get in it. It's full.
Beautiful park.
All right. Let the record be set straight. Any other questions or comments? At this time, I'll call the applicant back up, whoever, either Mr. Farley or you as his representative.
About the drainage, I have, I have gone out and done some preliminary work. I, I see why. The, those two neighbors to the west of us, three neighbors to the west of us are flooding, and it's because of some drainage pipes that are probably undersized and set too high, which is why, I believe it's Mr. Arino's pond is growing in size, as well as, basically, that whole area has to back up before it drains through, beneath his road. And then everything downstream is still wooded. It's not very well-maintained by the Gravity and Drainage District, because I don't believe there may have been an intent for it. But the property that's being developed right now is basically the top of that ridge. The impact we would be having downstream would be, we, we're the start, and where, like I told you, we were, we're gonna place in a large detention pond, and we wanna, we wanna hold all the water we can, basically, right now, because we're, we're planning on stocking that pond.
Sure.
So just giving y'all the update on some of the drainage. There, there is some drainage, but that's gonna be addressed in the engineering portion of this, and I will be, I would be getting with Gravity and Drainage District 6.
Sure.
Mr. David Cooley and that bunch.
Okay.
About this as well.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? I'd like the, the staff to expound or comment on the recommendation to deny with the not fitting in with the character of the area. Is that just mainly 'cause it's a mostly agricultural area?
It's residential.
It's mostly residential. It's A1 property.
Okay.
Most of the property in this, in this general area, the Royer Loop area, is being used for residential.
Residential. Okay. All right. Any questions or comments?
If you repeat that, I couldn't hear what that.
Sure. Mr. Crane?
Yes, sir. Most of the property is, a lot of the property is zone A1, but, but a lot of it is being used for single-family residential.
Okay. Did you hear that?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions or comments by the board? Ms. Christie, let's do a roll call vote.
Ms. Cobb?
No.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Galicia?
No.
Mr. Williams?
No.
Ms. Dickerson?
No.
Mr. Little?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Armitaur?
No.
Mr. Navarre?
No.
Nine against.
Item 15 fails. Item 16. Take appropriate action on RZ-03-006-17. A request by Osprey Lakes Development LLC to amend ordinance number 5712. That case was RZ-03-030-08. To remove stipulations two, that a six-foot privacy fence be installed on the north property line prior to the permit issuance, and three, that all parking must be hard-surfaced, concrete or asphalt at 7143 Big Lake Road in Ward 3. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Dickerson and a second by Ms. Coach Williams. Ms. Wallace?
This property is located south of Lake Charles and encompasses 17 acres. In 2008, the police jury rezoned this land for a recreational vehicle park. At that time, the two stipulations in question were imposed. Currently, the petitioner does not plan to install recreational vehicles within the 300-foot area between an existing pipeline right-of-way and the property line. He feels the natural vegetation provides a sufficient buffer between the RV park and the neighboring properties. Additionally, because the police jury did not impose a hard-surfacing stipulation on the property south of this parcel, the petitioner would like to remove the hard-surfacing requirement to ensure consistency. Because minimal impacts are to be expected by amending the stipulations, the staff recommends that the request be granted with the following stipulations: that the development comply with the remaining stipulations in ordinance number 5712, and that prior to fencing, only a caretaker's residence be permitted within the area north of the existing pipeline. A six-foot privacy fence must be installed on the north property line prior to permitting of any additional clearing or construction in this area.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Does the applicant have anything to add to the staff's presentation? Okay. Any questions or comments by the board? Seeing no opposition, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item 16 passes. Item 17. Take appropriate action on case RZ-03-007-17. A request by Osprey Lakes Development LLC to amend ordinance number 6025. That case, again, was. That case, again, was RZ zero three dash zero zero one dash one two, to remove stipulations that a six-foot privacy fence be installed on the north property line prior to permit issuance. And three, that all parking must be hard-surface, concrete or asphalt, at seven one four three Big Lake Road in Ward Three. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb. Second by Mr. Little, Ms. Wallace.
This property is immediately east of the previous request and encompasses nine acres. In two thousand twelve, the police jury rezoned this land for a recreational vehicle park. At that time, the same two stipulations in question were imposed. The petitioner would like to remove the stipulations to ensure consistency. Because minimal impacts are to be expected, the staff recommends that the request be granted with the following stipulations. That the development comply with the remaining stipulations in ordinance number six zero two five, and that prior to fencing, only a caretaker's residence be permitted within the area north of the existing pipeline.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace, would the applicant like to speak? Any questions or comments by the board? Seeing no opposition, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item seventeen passes. Item eighteen, take appropriate action on case ST zero four dash zero zero one dash one seven. A request by the Calqueshoe Parish Division of Planning and Development to reconsider rezoning of certain tracts of land from agricultural to mix, I'm sorry, agricultural, mixed residential, manufactured home park, and light industrial to heavy industrial, to maintain the industrial character of the area in the twenty-seven hundred block to thirty-two hundred blocks of Bayou Den Road, and the thirty, and the thirty-two hundred to thirty-six hundred blocks of Bayou Den Road, Bayou Den Pass in Ward Four. I will entertain a motion for approval. Motion by Ms. Cobb.
Second.
A second by Ms. Dickerson, Ms. Wallace.
This property is located south of Sulfur. On November seventeenth of last year, the police jury authorized the staff to conduct a study of the zoning in the area to determine if the land should be reclassified to an industrial classification. The study area consists of two hundred thirteen acres with forty-seven individual parcels and twelve property owners, all of whom were sent certified letters notifying them of the potential rezoning. Since the letters were sent, we have received two calls from property owners in favor of reclassification and one with no objection. Currently, the area has mixed uses with nine single-family dwellings, a marina and crane facility, and an office building. Since comprehensive zoning in nineteen eighty, there have not been any zoning requests within the study area. Because recent development in the area is heavy industrial in nature, the staff recommends that all the properties be reclassified to heavy industrial.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace, any questions or comments by the board? Comments? Mr. Crane? Yeah, are there any residents or anyone in the audience that?
No, my question is.
Ma'am, could you please come? We'll allow that, since you're a resident in the area. And state your name and address, please.
Yes, sir.
All right.
My name is Jill Hines, I live at fifteen oh four Julie Drive, Sulfur, Louisiana, but I do own part of the property in the Bayou Den area. It's been industrial for many years. I don't really object to seeing, my question was how it would change how we use it. We do have residents down there, and I did call, and I was told that, basically, it would not have any changes on how, you know, we handle the business down there. I just wondered, was there a certain person that wanted to change it, or it was just the Calqueshoe Parish?
Mr. Crane?
To answer her first question, they would be allowed to utilize the property from, you know, as residential until at a time that it discontinues the use for residential. So, yes, they would still, you would still be able to do that.
It's more or less grandfathered in?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And this was a request, I think, from the police jury who represents that area. We've noticed on the zoning map for many years that a lot of that area was zoned either mixed residential, and basically, we're just trying to get it to that industrial, so it's consistent with the types of zoning that's in that area.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's any other resident that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir, I live, my name is Julia Gaskins, I live on thirty-five oh seven Bayou Den Pass Road.
Okay.
And I'm all for it, because there's really nothing out there but us. I'd rather be gone, because there's too much traffic. I'm just being honest. But I have a problem with the traffic out there, with the big trucks. Is there any way we could, you know, get a speed limit, speed bumps?
Ma'am, that would not be a question for this board.
I didn't know.
You could go to the parish offices between eight-thirty and four-thirty.
The parish office?
The parish office, it's actually, could you give the address?
Well, I would just ask, just to clarify, it's the speed on Bayou Den Road or Highway one oh eight?
No, it's Bayou Den Pass.
Okay.
Bayou Den Road comes off of City Service Highway.
Right.
And then, when you get on Bayou Den Road, there's, if you go straight forward, go down to Pigment Plant and all of that, and Coke Plant, but there's a left right there, which is called Bayou Den Pass.
Right.
You go down, there's one crossroad, and that's Hafer Road right there. I live directly on that corner.
Okay.
And right across the street is that agricultural, whatever kind of plant that is. Okay, anyway, I live right there on the corner, and these trucks, jake, break, I mean, it's ungodly. I just don't know who to talk to.
I'm not sure either, that's what I heard.
I just need to, I just need to slow it down, I mean, it's really hard to.
Probably our engineering department.
Okay.
Which, if she calls seven two one thirty-five hundred, they can transfer her to that department.
She's right there.
There it goes.
Okay. Okay, I thank y'all.
All right, thank you.
That was my big concern.
Okay, you made me see it, thank you. Any other residents in the area that would like to comment? Okay. All right, any questions or comments by the board? Seeing no opposition, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item eighteen passes. Item nineteen, advise that the police jury took the following action on December fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, with reference to the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board from the December thirteenth, two thousand sixteen meeting. Applicant Wesdale at East Telephone Road, we passed, and the police jury upheld. Applicant Snyder at Sam Houston Jones, we passed, and the police jury upheld. Applicant Wood at Highway twenty-seven North was withdrawn, and applicant Austin at J. Jardell Road was also withdrawn. Item twenty, advise that the next regularly scheduled planning and zoning meeting will be held on Tuesday, February twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, in the police jury meeting room. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb and a second by Mr. Navarre. We are adjourned.